Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, May 22. If we can get a roll call to the Savage Quorum, please ma'am.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
Terry McLuhan.
I am here.
Chrissy Kendrick.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Peggy Adams.
Here.
We have six.
Stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undegraded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, get a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Hello.
Second.
Any additions? Who's saying? Yes, sir. Mr. Thomas.
I'd like to add sample budget management process.
Is that new number five or old number one?
Five, please.
Huh?
Be five under new business. Anything else? All those in favor of the agenda as amended, signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Bag it.
Any additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor of the approval of the minutes that submitted, sign by saying aye? Any opposed? We have a vote on the HDC for Wendy Supper. You know, Mr. McLuhan?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this person for the HDC. I don't have the name in front of me, I'm sorry.
That's how she pronounces it.
Super.
That's the one, yes.
Did we see your app?
Last week.
Did somebody second the motion?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ms. Thomas, you want to tell us a little bit about the cemetery?
Yes. Can I approach the bench?
Absolutely. Or you can speak from there, you've got a microphone, but that's fine.
I know, but I like to face the people I'm talking to. Well, the cemetery will be sponsoring a walkabout on Memorial Day, and the good news is, it's, the prediction is zero percent precipitation and a high of 78 degrees, so it's going to be a beautiful day. We just want to invite everybody to come down if you want to do the walkabout. It's a one-mile loop around the cemetery, and there'll be several different stations as you take the walkabout. One of them, I'll talk about, we're going to have a butterfly garden. We have hundreds of these little butterflies, and if you come on the walkabout, you'll be able to get a butterfly and go out into potter spiel, you know, and plant it in the butterfly garden. That's one activity. We will be having, pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. We have what we call our forget-me-nots line, which is a line strung between two of our beautiful trees in the cemetery, and we'll have paper and markers there, and if you have a friend, relative, or loved one who died in war, you're able to write a note and hang it on the line. I'm doing mine at home, so I have a sample for you. This is for my friend who died in Vietnam in 1968, and I'll be hanging this on the forget-me-note line. So we hope you'll come down, and that is available. You know, if you can't come to the walkabout and you just want to zip into the cemetery and hang something on the forget-me-note line, you're very welcome to do that. We'll have a little parade square, and the Art Deco Band will be leading our parades. They'll start every 20 minutes and go around the square. You can participate. You'll have little flags that you can wave as you march around the square. Have the lemonade stand. Our lovely county citizen will be there, and June Westfall will be there to talk about local boys who have died in wartime, and that's about it. It's going to be a great day. It won't be a good day if you, for adult bikers, because it'll be a stop-and-go thing, but if you have children and you want to bring their bikes, you'd be welcome to bring their bikes, and they can ride around through the cemetery, and I hope you'll just come and enjoy the cemetery that day. Thank you very much.
Time?
Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry. Officially, the time starts at noon when the flag goes back up to full staff, and it ends at 3:00 with the moment of, the national moment of remembrance. So, but you, you know, you can come any time you want to within that three-hour span.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Public comments?
There are some.
Hi. Ready for me? I'm Joyce Knowles. I live at Tusper Lane here in Eureka Springs. Two people that I care about are leaving Eureka Springs because they don't have accessibility, and they can't get a doctor. The City of Eureka Springs is unable to produce the self-evaluation required by the Americans with Disabilities Act, which was due by January 1993, for which structural changes should have been completed by January 1995. I am heartened to learn that Mayor Berry intends to conduct this evaluation soon. July 26, the Americans with Disabilities Act becomes 28 years old. 28 years is a long time to wait. We have, we are well beyond any expectation that we are even making the appearance of compliance after 28 years. I urge the city council, and this is what I wanted all along, I urge the city council and every department which finds itself with deficiencies to put accessibility remedies on their agenda and keep them on the agenda until they come into compliance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have some things to hand out. Eric Knowles. That's one. That's two. Thank you. I thank you for the opportunity to talk to you today. My name is Eric Knowles, and I live at Tusper Lane in the city. I want to thank you for initiating the ADA compliance self-evaluation. The mayor reported that the city's going to use the municipal league's ADA compliance guidelines. Title II of the ADA asked communities to complete an assessment by 1993 that did three things. First, identify areas of noncompliance. Second, identify actions needed to reach compliance. And third, to specify the means and a date by which compliance will be achieved. Last fall, Joyce Knowles FOIA'd the ADA compliance reports from city departments. The hodgepodge of information she received was noticeable for its incompleteness, inadequacies, and downright contrariness. The reports from the fire department and the parks and recreation department were the only ones that met the ADA guidelines, though certainly not the deadlines. We found that several examples where remedies were listed but were not made. For instance, the 2010 Public Works completed an ADA street survey that identified 30 curb cups, wheelchair ramps, and crosswalks. I gave you a list of those. Very few of these have been implemented. Identifying areas of noncompliance is only the first step of an assessment. The city departments need to be committed to identifying remedies and specifying the means and completion dates for those remedies. I'm distributing to you a document from the U.S. Department of Justice Civil Rights Division entitled "The ADA and City Governments: Common Problems." This document describes several misconceptions that cities, including Eureka Springs, have had concerning compliance. For instance, the Department of Justice is clear in stating that no, there is no grandfather clause in the ADA law. Similarly, it states there's no automatic ADA exemption for historic buildings. I urge you to read this document in preparation for your receiving and evaluating Eureka Springs' ADA compliance self-evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
That concludes the public comments for this evening. New business, we have ordinance to rezone 38 Prospect.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. See, we have, somebody for the planning commission want to come up and give us a report?
Hi, Melissa Green, Chair. At the last planning commission, we recommended that 38 Prospect be rezoned to C3 commercial. If you will look at your packets, which can I borrow that? And the reason, there were a couple of reasons why, why we decided to do this. Right here is 38 Prospect. The house next to it is, has a home occupation, and there is a gallery there, so it is operating commercially. Across the street at the Lane House, they have a CUP, so they can operate commercially. Across the street is C3, across the street is C3. The house next to the home occupation is C3, then you go to C1, another house across the street, C3. The building itself was in the 80s made into a B&amp;B, and has, really, as a residence, it would be hard for someone to come in, the amount of money, to restore it back into a usable place for a living. So that was the other reason we recommended it. And we recommended that it not be used as a restaurant.
As what?
As a restaurant.
Okay.
Mr. Thomas? I have a question about that with, you know, there's several things that are allowed in C3. Why did you specifically pick one and say not this?
Well, because in C3, you have parking requirements, and a restaurant, you know, they have parking probably for five, so it would be really hard, you know, it would be very invasive to that neighborhood probably to have a restaurant.
Terry?
How many, how many does Oscars have?
None that I know of.
On the side, they do.
Yeah, well, on the side. They have a bunch, they've got about eight or nine. I mean, that was the recommendation that the commission gave.
What about Gavioli Chapel? I mean, they could do the same thing here if the Gavioli Chapel does, and they don't have any parking.
Yes. I, I don't, I don't know if, if Gavioli Chapel, there was a recommendation to, I believe that there was a recommendation. David, you were here for that, not for, not to be a restaurant, and am I correct?
No, I'm talking.
No, but I, I'm just saying, as the planning commission, we can put a recommendation. This, this is not set in stone. We're just recommending, Bob, that you consider it not being a restaurant.
So, but they could have like a entry theater there?
Yes, yes, and, and 38 Prospect could have a theater there, so.
Mr. McLuhan?
Pat Rossman.
I don't, for lack of knowing the address, the house next door is Margaret Amundson's old house.
Yes.
And it's, it's zoned R1.
Yes.
So, I mean, I, I think it's a, I always thought, quite frankly, I thought they were all C3 whenever, whenever the old house on the corner with Katie at it, that they were all, I thought they were all done C3. But I think, I don't think we want to skip one. If we're going to make this one C3, the one next door that is R1 also needs to be C3, so it's contiguous. I don't care if they want to or not. I mean, if they're going to make it, you're not going to spot it. It's, you know, it's going to be contiguous.
Right.
That's the way I see it.
The reason, and I agree with the spot zoning, the reason I felt that the commission decided to recommend this was that there was a home occupation next door, and they were running it as a gallery.
It needs to be C3, too.
Okay.
It needs, it needs to be a continuous, contiguous.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that.
Well, I, I can understand the people around the way, but did you get applications from those people that asked you to do that?
No.
So you're, you, you responded to the application from the people that we're looking at right now?
Yes.
That was the application?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Ann?
They did have a home occupation.
Yes.
They are not operating a business, they are using their home as a residence right now, and I.
That's a good one. So, the gal, there was a gallery next door?
There was.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
What Terry brought up about the, the C3 rather than the spot zoning, is it, will it at some point be like an whole designation of C3? Is there a reason not to? Kind of keep it flowing?
I see no reason not, not to do that.
Okay.
The house in the middle, I don't know the address, too, we'll just say 40 Prospect, has not asked for it at this time. I know at one time, they applied for it and were turned down, but that was a number of years ago, probably seven, eight years ago.
So would it be your recommendation to make it a zone, a C3 quiet commercial zone?
Sure, sure. I, I.
Ann? There were parking requirements in C3 that.
I see.
Prospect has to have, they don't meet.
This, this one that we're talking about?
No, the one next door.
Oh, okay, that's the other one.
Residence.
Is there another?
They don't have parking for themselves.
Yeah. Right. And we also have, in the case of that, if we were to choose to recommend to do it, we have a variance that we can forego the parking requirements. We do have a variance in our codes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
I'm so confused. I'm totally lost.
Okay. How can I help you, Mickey?
Okay. So, the little red building on here.
Yes.
Is the one that wants to go C3.
Yes.
So that can reopen like it used to be.
Yes.
But the little residence to the right of it.
Yes.
They're, they're looking there as a house.
Right.
As a gallery.
Right. I, I was just.
They're planning on using that as a gallery.
Right. I just was informed that they no longer have a gallery there.
So, okay, so my question is, if we do a C3 in the middle of those R1s.
Right. Well, there's, across the street is C3.
Right, but, okay, we've got R1, this is, they want C3, here's an R1, here's an R1.
Right.
Spot zoning, really? And if we change this R1 to a C3, does, how does that change them personally? Anything?
It could have effects.
Well, then, before doing anything, should we not talk with them?
That, that's your decision. The planning commission is just recommending with a vote of five to zero that it be rezoned to C3.
Okay, but what I'm seeing is on this, on this R1, if nobody has talked to them, and this could change their living style habits, finances, whatever.
Right.
Would it not be a good idea that we talk with them?
Right.
See how they feel?
Well, I, I would before I rezoned it to C3.
One little thing right there.
Ms. Kendrick?
Isn't it true that the rezoning process includes notifying adjoining landowners?
I believe that was done.
Yeah, for the one property, not both.
Well, because the others didn't apply.
That one was talked to. They weren't talked to about rezoning theirs.
No, what I'm saying is that in order to get the approval, when they made the application, they would have notified all adjoining landowners.
Yeah.
So that they would have had an opportunity to protest.
To know that this one property only would be going C3. Not that they would automatically then make them.
Oh, no. Okay. So that's what, so we need to talk to it.
There, there was a sign out front.
Yeah, and, and that letters were sent.
Their property also would go C3?
They, okay, they.
There was a hearing and an application had been submitted.
On one.
For that particular purpose.
One property.
Yes, for that one property. So the sign was out front.
Right.
If they were sent letters, whether or not they read them or not.
Yeah.
It was a notification.
That's not the problem.
Right. No, I understand what you're saying, but there, there was a notification that, that the application was applied for, so.
But I mean, we can't just unilaterally change someone next to it without talking.
I don't think anybody's saying that at this point.
That's what was brought up.
Well, we're, we're dealing with 38 Prospect. We're not dealing with 36 Prospect.
I'm just going to go back to the one fact. If you put a sign out and you get a letter, and the person next to you is applying for it, it would make logical sense that if you wanted it, you would have applied. They didn't apply.
Right.
No, I disagree. Just because one place is going doesn't mean the other shouldn't.
Mickey, it doesn't matter. We're just dealing with one piece of property. I've got a question for a city attorney. Can you rezone the property and eliminate the restaurants? Eliminate a, if it's.
If you end up with a C3, no, I don't think you can.
Okay.
Now, I mean, if you, if you rezone it to C3, then it's anything.
It's going to be anything that's approved for C3. You could eliminate things that are in the exclusionary extra list, but you can't eliminate that if it's a purpose.
I'm afraid I'll write a board.
Continuing that trend, another question. If they have parking requirements in a restaurant, and it only has parking for five, and that they were looking at it for, for potential B&amp;B or whatever, hospital, whatever they were doing, doesn't some, doesn't some effect come in about that it doesn't have the adequate parking, or do you just have to look at it, and then it doesn't? If that's the case, what you're saying, then it, it doesn't apply for C3 because there's not enough parking for a restaurant?
Right.
And now you're saying that it could be a restaurant because of the code, but there's not enough parking, which now puts it over to the fact that it's an impact, it could be an impact on the neighborhood. So I guess what you're saying then is it's all a C3 or nothing?
Pretty much unless you're going to revamp what C3 nabbed it.
Now, they would have to ask for a variance on the parking.
Right. They, they, they can.
They'd have to come back for it.
They can get a variance, plus, and, and I'm not, I know for weddings, that for each attendee to a wedding, you must have one parking spot for four people, and I'm assuming that's probably what it is for a restaurant. And in the case of Oscars, I had forgot, Terry, they do have parking that goes around.
They have parking right on the side, yeah.
Right, so they probably are within code, because what we discussed at the meeting with Glenna, who's very knowledgeable, any license that is given out will have to meet requirements unless we give a variance, so.
I understand that.
And I believe there are five parking spaces there. Gene, five?
Mickey?
So basically, it wouldn't matter if a restaurant was not specially pointed out because there wouldn't be requirements anyway? Is this correct?
Okay.
Unless they got a variance.
Well, unless they had only 20, seat 20.
And if we didn't run that restaurant, they wouldn't give them a variance, so.
Mr. McLuhan?
Well, all I, all I want to do is just restate my opinion on it, and that is that I don't like the idea of skipping structures, skipping properties, that, that I believe that if it's going to be C3, make it all, you know, make it all C3. Don't make it all C3 all the way up to the old school. I'm, I'm good with that, always have been. But make, you know, don't, don't jump around hodgepots.
But at least talk to the people before you nail them.
Wow. Oh, I'm sorry.
If you had known before the vote that you couldn't write no restaurant on here, would that have affected how you voted for this?
I, I didn't vote, but I, I know there was a discussion, and Susan will back me up on this, that we, when we talked about the restaurants, we said that the parking requirements will probably take care of any licensing, so, because nobody's going to want to open a restaurant that maybe could only seat 20 people.
Nobody.
I'm sorry, I don't mean it like that. In a, in a building that size, in a building that size, I, I don't think they would want to open a restaurant that would only allow 20 people. I, I don't know. We did discuss it, didn't we, Susan?
And, and for the most part, I mean, that, that curb is painted red, you know, so, yeah, if people want to walk a half mile to the restaurant, but your chances are that, you know, they're, they're not going to do that. People want to come right up to the door, so, or at least be somewhat close to the place that they're eating. So I don't know, they do it all the time downtown, but at the same time, and, and people could take the trolley in if they wanted to, you know, and eat at a restaurant, too. But, you know, I guess if you were a business person, you would say, do I have enough parking? Do I have accessibility? You know, so if you want to take that chance, I guess, you know, that's, that's more power to them, but most won't.
Mr. McLuhan?
The house next door to the right of, of this house, the one on the corner, used to be a restaurant. How much parking has it got? You know, so, and it's C3, so how can you restrict one, and, and the other one is not restricted, so.
Terry, and, and I, I may be, I may be wrong about this one. That was Katie's corner. I think it was C1, and I think it got rezoned to C3. I could be wrong about that, but I, because remember, they rezoned all that area behind the crescent had been C1, and all of a sudden, they rezoned it to C3?
I doubt that they did that one like that.
Okay.
I can't remember that part of, but I know it's commercial, and it, and it always has been.
Right.
So, you know, I don't see how you, you know, what's good for one can't be good for the other, and, and it all needs to be contiguous.
If somebody applies for C3, does that change the tax, the taxes they pay on property taxes?
Yes.
So if the people next door are a residence and were upon occupancy, and we go along and was looking at potentially zoning everybody, then we've been affected their, their taxes. So maybe that's another reason they didn't respond.
That's what I said 10 minutes ago.
No.
What kind of, what kind of business are they opening there? Are they going to?
Historically, or at least within the last few years, it's been a bed breakfast.
Okay. Yeah, it looks like it would be a nice one.
Actually, eight years it hasn't been.
Okay.
When I read this over, you know, before we got started, I, my intention is always to support our commissions, because it looked like you had done due diligence and followed the process. But now I find out that, you know, you voted for a restriction that the attorney says that you can't have, so I'm concerned that planning may not have voted for this if that restrict, they have not been able to put that restriction on here. I would, I would almost like to see it go back and for you guys to take the vote without the restriction, the restaurant restriction.
I think it was, it was done with the, with the guidance of Glenna. Obviously, we did inquire to see if that would be a, a possibility. So at the time that it was done, it was believed to be available to us as far as putting that restriction on, so.
And also the discussion, too, Bob, was that a license would be the one that would decide what they could and couldn't do. And like I said, a building that size, to me, and Susan's saying, a, a good business plan, to me, would not be a place that's set 20.
And remember, this is a recommendation.
Recommendation.
This is not set in stone.
I want to take off of yours, what you said. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we table this and refer it back to planning for further discussion. Second that. Based on my.
Sure.
My name is Gene Blan. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. McKimmy, basically to apologize because they didn't know this meeting was going to be at this particular time. They had scheduled a vacation with their grandchildren, and so that's why they can't be here. He has no problem signing some document or whatever, restricting, he's not going to have a restaurant there. He'll sign whatever. The Old Stone Church is, is council, or remember, it was rezoned to C3, and it was restricted against the restaurant. How that was done, I'm not sure. without the restriction, the restaurant restriction.
I think it was done with the guidance of Glenna. Obviously, we did inquire to see if that would be a possibility. So at the time that it was done, it was believed to be available to us as far as putting that restriction on, so.
And also the discussion, too, Bob, was that a license would be the one that would decide what they could and couldn't do. And like I said, a building that size, to me, and Susan saying, a good business plan, to me, would not be a place that sat 20.
And remember, this is a recommendation.
Recommendation.
This is not set in stone.
I'm gonna take off of yours, what you said. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we table this and refer it back to Planning for further discussion.
Second that.
Based on my-
Sure.
My name is Gene Blan. I'm here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. McKimmy, basically to apologize because they didn't know this meeting was gonna be at this particular time. They had scheduled a vacation with their grandchildren, and so that's why they can't be here. He has no problem signing some document or whatever, restricting. He's not gonna have a restaurant there. He'll sign whatever. The Old Stone Church is council, remember? It was rezoned to C3, and it was restricted against the restaurant. How that was done, I'm not sure, you know, but that's the way it was done. But the McKimmys, you know, they apologized for not being here. He would've been here. Maybe if you could vote on it, table it, come back next time, however it would work.
I would object to tabling it because I think this is stopping a real estate transaction from moving forward or a business from moving forward. And I think that's a very bad thing for city government to be doing. I think we should respond promptly to permits and make our decisions and not drag them out over a period of months.
To be perfectly honest, there is no real estate transaction. I mean, I sold this seven years ago.
But there is a business opening.
There is a business, yes, ma'am. But I don't wanna mislead somebody. I don't have a dog in this fight. I'm just down here because I sold it seven years ago. Yes, sir.
So are you saying that they need this decision made now because they have a business that's going in there in the next month?
I'm not saying that, sir, no, sir.
Okay, so we're not postponing the business?
I think what happened, they lost their CUP because they were remodeling it. They weren't renting it out. Time got away from them. 180 days went past. There were CUPs across the road. They could not have another CUP. This was their only option, as I understood it, was to rezone it to C3. They wrote the letter to all the folks. No one objected to it. Planning Commission did an excellent job, I thought, in redoing it, but there is no real estate transaction pending on this. It just meant it can't really be a restaurant. There's just not enough room. The gentleman was offered to C3. I understood he did not wanna be a participant in this, this next door. Why, I don't know.
I think that's unfortunate because I don't care whether he, you know. I mean, my opinion is what it is. I don't like to see it. By jumping around, because the next owner of that property might. And then you gotta go do it all again. And if you're gonna jump there, you gotta jump someplace else. And I don't like that.
Yeah, point well taken. It's C3 there where Katie's corner used to be, or C2. It's C1 across the street on the backside. The Crescent property's back there. And then it's C3 across where the Victorian Sampedi used to be. So, I mean, it's pretty well surrounded. May not be contiguous property, but, you know, you can throw a rock to all the C3s in that area.
Ms. Snyder?
I have no problem- Yeah, okay, Gene. I have no problem with changing that one to C3, but I will not vote to change an R1 to a C3 without talking to them. That one's gonna change your finances.
And my understanding was from Mr. McKimmy. He talked to the gentleman, they're good friends. He did not wanna do it. It may have been because taxes would go up. I don't know.
So he has already stated he wants to stay in R1?
Yeah, you know, I was not, I didn't hear it come from his lips, but it was repeated to me.
But that's what McKimmy said?
That's what Mr. McKimmy said, yes.
Okay. So one property only is basically what we have to focus.
Can I ask you another question? Do they still have their home occupancy license?
They did not renew their license.
Okay, thank you.
And may I say something else? If you had seen the, if you had seen Mr. McKimmy's discussion of planning, and there's a summary in the notes, he's not interested, he's only interested in doing three low-key things. And he pretty much said that, and that's why, that's why the draft minutes are in here so you could get an overview of what he was asked and what his response was.
Mr. Rieger? I have to caution you because what has recently took place in Rogers is one major building in the downtown portion of Rogers applied to change certain things in their zoning, and they were granted that. And when they went to put up the sign, they went and applied for a new permit for their sign, and they put it in a totally different business than what they originally stated. Now, anytime you change it to C3, it can be whatever's legal in C3 if they can get the other variances. Now, I'm not gonna tell you they're gonna put a restaurant. They very well may be telling exactly what they want. But the next owner might come along next week, and the next owner may wanna put whatever is allowed in C3. So if you change it, you're changing it to C3. You're not changing it to their particular point.
Thank you.
Some good summary.
Ms. Kedrick?
I think it would be an injustice to leave it as residential. I think it is, to leave it as residential would be spot zoning. And so I think we should change the zoning. Well, as-
What about the house next door? It's residential, you're gonna isolate it?
Terry?
We have a motion on the floor.
Sorry.
I think it would be spot zoning to refuse.
Yeah, we're still talking about sending it back to the Planning Commission.
Unless we wanna-
And this is pertinent to that because I don't think that there's any reason to send it back.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion to refer this back to the Planning Commission? Ms. Snyder?
Just one quickie. Do you personally, as chair of Planning, think it should come back for discussion? After what you've heard?
No, I don't. I think we've, you know, the lawyer's opinion. We made a recommendation. It's just a recommendation. It comes to this table, you make the decisions. The lawyer basically said, you know, they made a recommendation, but it's no good. But we recommend it to rezone it. And I think that's what needs to be voted on today.
So would not really make any difference to send it back to Planning? Is that what you're saying?
No, I don't think so. We would just send it back to rezona.
I'll rescind my motion if the second chooses to. If not, I'll leave it.
You're the second.
I know. So if, do I have to make a new motion or does my motion stand if I don't take back my second?
If you're gonna leave the second, I'll leave the motion, and we'll just vote it.
I'll leave my second.
Okay, then we'll vote. I'll keep my motion.
I think Bob's clear on the process.
Bob, you wanna rescind? David's trying to rescind the motion, so it stays at this table. Do you still feel like you wanna send it back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I don't, I can't assume how they would vote if they knew that it could be a restaurant.
All right, so the motion is to refer this back to the Planning Commission for further consideration on this rezoning application with additional facts that have been known there. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Maybe we better have a little call.
Yeah.
I'm so confused.
Mr. Mitchell?
To send it back to Planning?
I'm gonna go ahead and do no. I think it's dangerous to bring another motion up, but I'm gonna do no.
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Thomas, your vote?
Oh, is it the same thing I voted a minute ago? I said aye real loud.
Yes?
We're doing roll call, I'm sorry.
Ms. Snyder?
To send it back? No. No.
Ms. Adamson?
No.
Ms. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Two, four.
Four, two. Do I have any other motions? Ms. Snyder?
Well, considering that you can't get restaurant license without meeting requirements, I don't see that anything will change. So I'll make a motion that we go ahead and vote on the rezoning of this one property only.
Should we, okay, before we get a second, Mr. City Attorney?
A license can be obtained by payment of a fee. Doesn't mean it operates legally just because it has a license. So using the word license is not a good way of referring to this.
Okay, so-
I can go to the city clerk and give her the appropriate fee for a license for a business.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean I'm operating the business legally if I go and open the business. It simply means I paid the tax to get a license, and she's obligated to issue the license.
Regardless of if you meet the proper requirements for that license?
License is a tax.
Okay, what word do you want me to use?
All right. You wanna make a motion, too?
Okay, I make a motion that we go ahead and vote on if we are going to change 38 Prospect to C3 from R1.
Okay, do I get a second?
Second.
Okay, you got a discussion, more discussion. Okay, motion on the table is to rezone this from R1 to C3. Okay, let's do a roll call again.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Ms. Kendrick?
Yes.
Ms. Adamson?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Well, I better say yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. All right, this brings us to our next discussion. We got some people here for this, too, I think. Get a motion for discussion of the medical marijuana.
So moved.
Second?
Marijuana. All right. We have, I'm not sure who's gonna be representing this, people. We're only gonna have one or two speakers, I know. Cast of thousands are welcome to come in. I was approached by, I'm not sure who's coming in, Dan Bell, in particular, Dr. Dan Bell. They are interested in applying for an application for the medical marijuana. Part of the requirements, I think, from the state is that the city make a-
Wow.
Say, we're in favor of it or not. And here's Dr. Dan Bell now. I have kinda given you a little prep.
Oh, really?
Yes, just introduction. So that you're here to discuss the medical marijuana.
Thank you all for letting us be on your agenda. We'll try to be brief. We're here to inform you of what we're doing. Over the last six months, we've been working on organizing a group to see if we can get a license to do a medical marijuana dispensary in Eureka Springs. What we hope to do tonight is just let you know why we're doing this, timeline, introduce our board to you so you can see who is involved in this. Dr. Cressy will make some comments on why we think we're uniquely qualified to do this. I'll make some closing comments. If y'all have questions, we're not gonna ask y'all to do anything other than be informed because, quite honestly, community support is gonna really be important on us landing this. So that's what we're about. So as far as why, you know, timing's everything. As y'all know, there is an epidemic of opiate abuse in America. Last year, 54,000 people died, Americans died of overdoses. And most of those were opiates. Meanwhile, and that's up 11% from the year before. So it's 54,000, it's rising pretty fast. And that's caught the eye of politicians and Americans, so Americans are aware of this. And so meanwhile, marijuana's overdose rate, as you probably know, is holding real steady. It's zero. There's never been a reported overdose to the CDC of a marijuana overdose. And so Americans are aware of this. It is a natural, safer medication, and they're interested in that. And so as a result, even in Arkansas, we've gotten medical marijuana legalized. There's now 29 states in Arkansas where it's legalized for medical marijuana. I'm on a blank, I don't wanna say next, but I'll get there. So here's the timeline that's gonna go down. The Marijuana Commission's put the rules together, and starting July 1, they're gonna receive applications. July 1 till September 30, they will receive applications for the dispensaries and the cultivations. There will be 32 dispensaries spread around the state, five big cultivation spots. The dispensaries will be spread among districts. In northwest Arkansas, we're gonna get four dispensaries. Now, that district includes Fayetteville, Springdale, Rogers, Bentonville, over to Cylon, over here to Eureka. Four. So, y'all, that's gonna be hard to get. I've seen our mayor quoted that he hopes we're gonna get two in Eureka. I quite honestly think that's very unlikely. If we get one, it's gonna be amazing. So it's gonna have to be done perfectly, with the right group, with a perfect application, and it's gonna have to have community support. So that's the kinda thing we're thinking of. So I wanna introduce our board. They managed to get most everyone in here. So let me just start here on the end. This is Julie Brentz. Julie is from Fayetteville. She's an experienced cultivation grow manager. She's had years in California. She knows how to grow marijuana commercially. This is Jim Fain, Dr. Jim Fain. Most of y'all know Jim. His PhD has served him well for many years, treating people here herbali, naturally. He's a perfect fit for what we're trying to do. And next person on our board is my wife, Susie Bell, who is a speech pathologist, who brings a lot of energy and, of course, experience with Echo and patients, and on and on. And then Julie Cressy, who is a registered nurse, is on our board. This is Debbie Langston, a nurse, a scrub nurse, who's married to Dr. Andy Langston. He'll meet in a minute. This is Michelle Barnes. Michelle is a CRNA, but she's worked at our hospital and our clinic, has several years' experience. She's a nursing student now. She'll be in charge of our consumer relations. Over here is John Hutchcroft, an experienced nurse practitioner, works with a VA, helps us at Echo. Next to him is Dr. Langston. Andy Langston's an optometrist with years of experience. That's Frank Egan. He is a certified USDA organic grower. And next to me is Dr. Cressy, who you all know. Not here, is a businessman from Little Rock, Bruce Schratch, who'll help us with banking, financial aspects. And then an industrial engineer, Susie's brother, Chuck Steger, worked IT with GE. Y'all, it's a dream team. We may not be any good at basketball, but if you're gonna do a marijuana dispensary, this is the team you want with you. While we were waiting, and we're sorry we were rowdy, we were figuring out how many years of experience. There's over 200 years of patient care experience represented in this group. So anyhow, let me stop talking and give Dr. Cressy a moment 'cause I want him to talk about why we think it's important to have a group like this involved with the dispensary.
So here's how the prescriptive process works. An individual that is interested in getting legal prescription marijuana for their problem goes to their physician, which is defined as a medical doctor or a DO. And then that doctor interviews and examines the patient and decides if they indeed have the criteria that the state health department has outlined. And there's a list of problems that include things like cancer, weight loss, HIV, hepatitis B. I don't need to go through all of them, fibromyalgia, but basically suffering. And if you do meet the criteria and your physician or a physician certifies you as such, you go to the health department where you're given a card. And that card then allows you to go to a medical dispensary and obtain marijuana. Now, once you go into the dispensary, then there's all types of cannabis. There's topicals, smokeables, there's vaping, there are edibles. There are different kinds of cannabis, including indica and sativa, the cannabinoids, which are non-intoxicating. And so there's all different types of formulations that are available to individuals. And people that are cannabis naive and have a medical problem wouldn't really know exactly what to do when they're given all these different choices. And that's where we think, with our medical professional background, that we can help our patients by making sure that this dispensary is run professionally. So there are people in there that can say, listen, you're 88 years old and you have COPD. You should not be looking at any of the smoke or vaping type possibilities. You need to be looking more at the edibles. And if you want something with a little quicker onset, this is what you need as opposed to this. We plan on running this dispensary that way, with professionals that are in there, nurses and people that are trained. Plus, each one of us are gonna get trained and certified in medical marijuana dispensing also because we're somewhat naive about this as well. But we're not naive to the idea that you need a group running this dispensary who has a lot of medical experience and experience in growing, producing a top-quality product. And I think that's why this group is important. And I think it's what's gonna distinguish us from anybody else in this area who's applying for a license. And since it's supposed to be merit-based, we think that's gonna- And since it's supposed to be merit-based, we think that's gonna give us the leg up.
The mayor? Would this be something that the city would be interested in doing a resolution to support them that they could also take as part of their package? Since we do resolutions for, to show support for other things? Just a thought.
Um, I just wanna say, as an attorney, I'm representing another applicant for a dispensary, and I therefore cannot participate in this whole discussion.
We understand that, and we weren't gonna ask y'all for a resolution.
You really weren't going to?
We would love to have that, but I think it puts some of y'all in a curious position. What we did hope is, as we can tie down a location, and quite honestly, we can't tell you our location yet, that we might circle back to y'all and ask for something like that.
Well, maybe we could do a resolution to support the dispensary in generic terms versus specific.
I think that would be helpful.
What would this dream team approach do to the cost to the consumer?
It won't increase the cost. There's no, these people are operating without any pay.
Mickey?
Anne, what did you mean that that, doing a resolution could be harmful?
Well, I thought it's unfair to come in here and ask y'all to...
Oh, okay, I thought she meant, perhaps you're gonna come looking for it.
Because I, we know, y'all, there's four other, there's four other groups in Eureka vying for this. And there's probably forty up and down the corridor. Uh, we want your support as community leaders. We want the whole community behind this. And we want who we are to sort of speak for itself. I don't think the Marijuana Commission expects y'all to do this, but when our application comes down there and it says, "City Council and the mayor is supporting our efforts," that's gonna be great. We'd love to have that, but we're uncomfortable asking y'all for that.
Okay, so in other words, what you said about a generic resolution...
Dispensaries.
...of the idea, would that be...
I think we'd love to have that. I think we'd love to have ultimately, once we have a location and a name tied down, we can come back to y'all later and say, "Here's where we're gonna be." You've had a chance to think about it. Other groups have had a chance to talk to you if they choose to, and then that would be more of a fair basis.
Well, then any of the groups could use the resolution.
Exactly.
What makes your group so unique? You have many medical doctors and clinical doctors. What makes your Board of Directors unique in wanting to have a dispensary?
Well, I have a hunch that the other groups aren't bringing with them medical professionals that know the community, that have the combination of experiences we have.
And, and are you...
That's the point Dr. Cressy was trying to make.
Right, and I've, I heard somewhere, maybe this is a, uh, your idea is to give back to the community on a financial level?
Now, let me finish my closing comments, 'cause that's where I wanted to go with this. 'Cause quite honestly, we think we're gonna be the best dispensary in the state of Arkansas. And we say that on the front end because we already are working on hosting a symposium the week after War Eagle. We've already penciled in how we're gonna invite everyone else in the state to come to Eureka to learn how to do this. And we're gonna bring in outside experts to get us all on the same page. So when we do this in Arkansas, we do it well. No one else is talking to the Medical Society or the Board about doing that, but we've already started that discussion. We've also had discussions with a PhD researcher whose dream is to institute the Arkansas Institute of Cannabis Studies in northwest Arkansas. She's already come and met with us. We're already planning how we're gonna collaborate with all the other dispensaries, getting them together so there's research occurring. How does our product work? What's working well here? No one else is doing that right now. So I, my feel is, we're already out a little ahead of where a lot of folks are. The other thing that I think that you're gonna see is, this isn't about us making money, y'all. This is about a service that we're gonna have available here in Carroll County. There are people right now on narcotics who are planning marijuana in January. They're talking to their pain doctors, trying to figure out, "Where am I going to get off my narcotics so I can use marijuana?" That's already happening. And so, uh, you know, we're already starting, I've had three conversations, it was more than that one, Michelle, four or five conversations today at the clinic about how we're gonna do this. And the other thing is, and we're not gonna say what we're gonna do 'cause too much of this information could be used by our competitors. So we don't want to empower them to be better. But I think as you see this unfold, you'll see this group will give back to the community in a way that's pretty remarkable. And that ultimately will be something that Eureka's really gonna be, really, really gonna be proud of, so. Mr. Thomas?
Well, I'd like to issue a disclaimer because I bought a little building a couple of months ago, and when people asked me what I was gonna do with it, I just jokingly said, "Oh, I'm gonna close down the business that's here and start a dispensary." I've had calls today, you know, asking me if I was one of the four groups.
Where's that building?
I'm not a group. I'm just one person, I'm not a group.
Where's your building, Ar?
It's on Highway 62.
But I, I don't see City Council doing a resolution to support any one business person.
I changed, I changed it to make it generic so that any of the dispensaries that wanted one would say that the city of Eureka Springs supported the concept of a medical, a marijuana dispensary. And I wanted to clarify, right now, you can get synthetic, a physician can order synthetic, a derivative of marijuana right now, and you can even buy it in certain pharmacies in the city.
We've been prescribing Marinol for how many years?
Probably thirty-two years we've used Marinol. It's not a great product, but...
No, I understand. Just so that they're aware.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Anybody have questions for us or other members of the group?
So do you need anything from us today, other than to let us know?
I couldn't hear you, you're...
Do you need anything more from it? Do you need anything today from us, other than to let us know?
No. No, we appreciate your time. And again, the whole point is, we wanna generate community support, and we thought we should start with the community leaders.
Do you have a website so that we can know about these different symposiums that you're gonna...
We're working on that.
All right.
Right, John?
Yes.
We're talking about that in the hall.
All right.
And then just to add one thing to the financial concern, uh, John Hutchcroft, sir?
Uh, you need to come up here. Come on, you're fine.
All right, John Hutchcroft, thanks. Just to address part of that financial concern, specifically, the amendment specifically prohibits physicians that have financial interest in a dispenser, not allowed to benefit from it. That's part of the amendment. Correct. We will not be able to certify you to go to our dispensary.
Exactly.
But we're already talking to our colleagues on how that will work out.
Any other questions for...
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Bye, guys.
Jim, how are you, sir?
See you tomorrow, Jim. See you tomorrow, Spider. Homer's market.
All right, our next item on the agenda is discussion, uh, ordinance for no smoking in Basin Park. Ms. Snyder and Ms. Adamson?
So moved. Second. Thank you. You're welcome.
You're up.
Okay. We do need to do something in regards to smoking in parks and public and what have you. And since originally, the no-smoking ordinance was done in regards to Basin Park, and we forgot to put teeth into it, that is why I brought this back on the table after we voted down the previous situation. So we have a place to start, and that would be Basin Park, it's simply located downtown. That's where the ordinance originally started from. And I said, "We forgot to give a teeth." The police can't do anything because we didn't put that stuff in there, which is why I asked if we could get that ordinance thingy going.
Okay, so...
So we need to give the ordinance teeth.
Do you wanna, do you wanna make, do you wanna make a motion to, uh...
I make a motion that we put in the proper stuffs needed for the police to be able to enforce the ordinance that we gave them. Both of the time.
We don't have an ordinance.
We don't have an ordinance.
We don't have an ordinance. No, we don't. No, we don't have no-smoking ordinance.
What was it that we did in Basin Park that said no smoking?
That was a, that was a park still.
I don't know if anybody really can answer this, but I, I just find it hard to believe that the policy over there is no smoking, there's no, you know. If I see somebody smoking, ordinance or no ordinance, I have to call a policeman. I can't believe somebody that's smoking would, a policeman would come up and say, "Sir, there's no smoking in Basin Park," that somebody would continue smoking. Does that happen a lot, with a policeman standing there telling you, "You can't smoke in Basin Park"?
There's no, there's no enforcement, there's no...
Technically, if the officer comes up to you and tells you not to do something, and there's not a law against it, you're in violation of what's called 42 USC 1983. What that is, is the use of the color of a police officer's position to stop something or to prevent you from one of your civil rights.
But he informs you that there is a policy?
He can say, "There's a policy." But he can't threaten to arrest you, ticket you, or otherwise do anything else.
Well, I just can't believe somebody would continue smoking if they're told.
Typically, with a policy, there are those that will violate a policy. 'Cause there's no consequence when they do.
Okay, so did I name the wrong department? As far as I know, we have an ordinance, whether it's from parks or council.
We need an ordinance establishing no smoking in Basin Park.
I thought we had one, that's what I'm saying.
We do not. We need, we need a motion for, an ordinance to be written establishing no smoking in Basin Park.
What happened to the one we had?
We don't have one.
It never got finished?
We never have one.
Okay, so I am making the motion, rewording the motion, thinking we already had one. I make a motion that we write an ordinance for no smoking in Basin Park.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right.
We had one.
Mr. McPlon?
Let's just make it, no smoking in Basin Park. Let's keep it simple.
That's what the ordinance, what the motion was for.
Okay. So let's keep it that way.
Okay.
I think it's shameful that we made ban smoking in Basin Park and still allow it in our playgrounds, on our skate parks, dog parks, on our soccer fields, in our springs and spring reservations, and the playground in Leatherwood. I just think it's shameful.
We said at this table, we asked for input. We had a draft ordinance made up by somebody at the table here. Parks came in with a draft ordinance. And came in, Bob graciously put it all together, gave us a nice sheet, and we, we brought it forward, and it, it just deteriorated. And I, I'm going to agree with Councilman Christie here that with all the work and the input we had from Parks and the workshop and everything else, to, to see it die at this table and then come back, attempt to come back, or it may come back in a very narrow way for one particular park, I, I find unacceptable for me.
Ms. Snyder?
I've learned the hard way in Eureka, you start with baby steps. We didn't get the other one passed because it got so convoluted and totally out of line from what the beginning thing was. There were so many parameters that were unreal. You start with baby steps. We start with Basin Park, which was the original park that it started with. And when that one gets done, we move on, and we include. And that doesn't mean we have to have a meeting on every single park the city has. It means we start with one and get that done. Then we add in more, then we get more. Hopefully, Lake Leatherwood will be the next one we work on, but with some common sense and not overdoing.
Any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to establish an ordinance for no smoking in Basin Park. All those in favor, St. Pappas saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, opposed.
Okay. Step five-one? Okay. All right, so we will get an ordinance prepared for no smoking in Basin Park.
With teeth.
All right. The next item on our agenda is a request from the CAPC for an ordinance allowing removal of commissioners. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, this was brought before me by one of the CAPC commissioners. I had talked to municipal league and to our city attorney. Basically, we, uh, this falls under part of the state law that says it's only the commissioners, I mean, only the city council that can remove commissioners. We can have policies in the handbooks stating that whatever, you know, they, they miss, whatever that feel like the requirement is, three consecutive meetings or, you know, in a year, or whatever, they can recommend to the city council that that commissioner can be removed. That's up to the city council to establish an ordinance in that effect. Is that correct, Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Could that ordinance apply to all commissions or only to CAPC?
The ordinance would be, depending on how it's written, but I would see it depending, it would be based upon the policies of, and I don't know whether we would establish that policy or would it be up to each commission?
It would probably be up to this table to actually set the final on what would be enough to terminate someone's commission. But it would be best probably to take input from the various commissions because some of the commissions meet a lot more frequently or have a lot more need for their people. And if you're gonna say X number of meetings, might be very harmful to one that doesn't meet very often, as where if it meets very frequently, it might be more likely that they could... So I would take some comment from your commissions, if I were you, probably, so that you could put some ascertainable guidelines that really meets the commission's need if somebody's gonna be removed. Could the ordinance authorize commissions to develop their own policy?
You could do that and then recognize the policies. But you are ultimately the one that decides if the policy's been violated and whether the commission would be removed.
The other day, Mr. Bright brought to our CAPC meeting some municipal code that actually said that the CAPC can do that themselves and did not necessarily need an ordinance, but that we already had this municipal league and we felt we should allow that to take place and stay with it. But he had a, a different version, and he sent me an email on it, and I was looking for it. Ma'am? Thank you. That the, that the CAPC actually did not need official ordinance. Oh, I can't.
Can we read it?
You want me to?
Yes, thank you. Oh, my glasses are somewhere. Oh, well.
Okay, this, um, um, 2.56104 meeting, the City Advertising and Promotion Commission shall meet as often as may be necessary, and also shall be subject to special call by the chairman. Okay, then it goes, the next one is, the commissioners shall adopt such rules and regulations as they may deem necessary and expedient for the proper operation of the commission, and they shall have the authority to alter, change, or amend such rules and regulations at their discretion. Would that not cover it, Mr. Weaver?
Is that what you, I'd receive?
That's, that's what Rick had sent us, and, and, but again, we still had the discussion, and we knew this, the municipal league had said this, so we still felt that if the council looked at it, they would be covering other commissions. And I think, was it not the Planning Commission already has had? I believe it was one of them, had some kind of attendance, or they thought they did, I don't know. Not true, okay. They, somehow, they thought they did.
I don't have the handbook in front of me, but David showed, what, is there a handbook around here?
No, but Susan has the answer to the question.
My understanding...
Please.
My understanding on planning is that, from what I've read, that we do have an attendance policy. Now, whether or not that was issued by planning or that was done by city council at some point, I don't know. I haven't been on there long enough. But my understanding is that there is one, and that you are allowed, I believe it's three absences. And that is typically why, when someone is not at a meeting, we're saying it is with notice. So it's... So it's excused, it's accepted by the chairman at that time. So I don't know where it originated from, or anything like that, but that is my understanding of, of the handbook that I have.
There's, there's nothing in our city ordinance, under Planning Commission, that addresses that. And the municipal league attorney basically said, and I can't quote the number, but it's under the section of removal of commissioners, elected officials and commissioners, and under the election of commissioners, it's up to the city council for final removal. So I think that's where, that's the municipal league's attorney's states.
Um, what, what precipitated this call to tighten this up somehow? What happened?
There isn't any policy for that.
So they want to have the policy? Because, I mean, like on the sedentary commission, people always come.
It was, it, it started innocently enough with a concept at CAPC, and a discussion about if, if a person comes on a commission, and we were talking about CAPC, and they, they know upfront that there's, that there is requirements to be there, it's a voting meeting, you need a majority to vote. And, and it makes sense, if you have so many members, that you would like everybody there to voice their opinion, and be part of the process, blah, 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 blah. And if, when you have member, or members that are missing a lot, undefined, everybody would have to define their own, it starts impacting the functioning of the commission. You're on the cemetery, you understand that. So that was the start of the discussion. That led to the discussion at the CAPC about instituting, or looking at, an attendance policy to assure that we had enough people that were there, and if we didn't, the end result could well end up that somebody left the commission because of excessive attendance, so that it allowed somebody to come on that would participate.
Got it.
That's what it was. And then, once we started that discussion, and, and everything, we received some feedback that somebody sent us about an attorney general's opinion, and we couldn't do it, and everything. So then, that Mike Maloney came over and talked to the mayor, who said that, you know, we have other commissions and everything going on here, and in the, in essence, the same issue could apply. So that started the conversation.
Thank you.
Ms. Kendrick.
Considering that different commissions have different statutes regulating how the commissioners get appointed, can we have an all-encompassing rule over all of the commissions?
Once again, the commission is the, the council is the one, I think the theory being, the council is the one who appoints the commissioners, therefore, it's the commission, it's the council that can remove the commissioners.
In the case of the CAPC, we don't actually appoint them, but kind of give our advice and consent.
They make the recommendations, and we approve or disapprove. No, I wanted the big, big green one.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's like an appointment of a, a judge, and it has to go to the senate for confirmation.
Mr. Weaver?
It's actually very similar to all the other commissions. The mayor recommends the others to you for confirmation. In their instance, the CAPC recommends there for your confirmation. You're still the confirming body, the six of all commissions. It's simply where the recommendation come from.
Got it. Ms. McQuone?
So, the way I said then, now we could have, we could have our policy, the commission could, the CAPC commission could have its policy, whatever it is that dictates how many meetings that, that you must attend, or, or if you fail to attend, that, that you can be relieved of your position. And what we do then is, is once we, if we determine that, and there's somebody that we think is negligent in their responsibility to the commission, then we submit that, we take our vote, and then we submit that to the city council.
That's correct.
That's the way it would need to go.
Yes.
Well, I have no problem with that, it's all right.
You looking for the number? I think you wrote it in an email. 14-point dash 42 dash 0109A2.
42 dash 109.
Yes, sir.
Exactly. That states, the council of any city may provide by proper ordinance for the removal of any appointed officer upon a majority of vote of the council, period.
Thank you.
So, it'd be up to, I think what, what I'm hearing is for each, possibly each commission to establish their attendance procedures, or removal, I mean, meeting attendance, and then they make a recommendation to the city council, and the city council votes yea or nay.
That's all right.
But we'd need a, we'd need a, an ordinance for that, which we don't have at this point in time.
So, are we, make, if we were to make an ordinance, would it be for all commissions, or just the CAPC to be able to remove a commission?
I would see that the ordinance would state, I think as Mr. Weaver had pointed out, based upon each commission's policy, then it would come before the council for removal.
When the commission thought there had been a violation of their policy.
Okay, so this means that CAPC has to write their policy, and then we approve their policy?
No.
Sorry?
No, it, they, they can do what they want with their policy. If they think three meetings in a row, you're out, and the planning commission may say, three meetings in a year, you're out, Parks may say, three meetings in six weeks, you're out. It's up to, to each, and the cemetery may say, you missed one meeting, you're out. Now, I don't think that'd be good, but you can write it that way.
I think about it.
So, I mean, so it'd be up to each commission to establish a policy. That's reasonable policy, I guess. Mr. Weaver?
It also wouldn't have to just cover absences. If you had incivility among the commission, or you could have other rules.
Well, we were just talking about attendance, but okay.
But each commission would probably want to set up their own list. And then ultimately, the six of you would sit as, or whoever occupies these chairs at that point, would act as the judge, and would have the right, if they thought it was not proper, still not to remove.
Okay.
Ms. Kendrick.
Is this a common problem? I mean, if it, if we've come this far, and we don't have these rules, perhaps it's something that maybe we need to address on a person-by-person basis. So if you do have a particular person on a commission that is not attending, perhaps that ought to come, that situation, particular situation, ought to come to council.
It would probably be best if each commission established their own, established a policy. I don't know if the CAPC has a policy at this point, or the Parks, or the Plankton.
Why would we have to have an ordinance with a state statute that allows for it anyway?
Because it says by ordinance.
Actually, I think the ordinance is referring to is the actual removal ordinance.
That is, okay.
Now, in the 14, 15 years, actually, that I've occupied the city attorney's job, this has come up at least three different times, that a commission wanted to try to remove a member.
For absence, or for other reasons?
Absence primarily. And there has been one elected official removed during that time.
It says by proper ordinance, I'm not sure what proper ordinance means.
An ordinance.
In that, in that instance, the court determined that proper ordinance was the ordinance that actually removed the elected official.
No, I mean, for, that's, for the, uh...
Yeah, I understand. But the...
So do we have a proper ordinance already in effect?
I don't know that we have to have one in effect, although we could easily pass one that allows the body to do it. But they have to, when they remove someone, they have to pass an ordinance that specifically removes that person.
Really?
So, somebody from the, the Parks voted to remove somebody that'd come for us and say, "We want Joe..."
They would bring an ordinance with that person's individual's name in it, requesting that the council vote in favor of that ordinance for removal.
Even the, even the CAPC, with what he just read?
You ultimately put the CAPC there.
We ultimate, what's that mean?
The, the CAPC recommends to who, who they want to be their parties.
CAPC, too.
So, they're not actually putting those members on the board.
That's true.
The six of you vote to put them on the board.
Okay.
So what you're, what I'm hearing you say is, basically, anybody that the commission wants to be removed, come before the council, and we have to establish an ordinance for that.
You, you would have to remove them by ordinance, yes.
And we don't ha, and we don't have that ordinance, or we do have it?
Individually, no.
So we don't have to make an ordinance unless you need one?
No.
That's why I'm asking, just, do we have, do we have an ordinance to do just what was said?
We have state statutes that says we can pass that ordinance.
We'll pass an ordinance. Well, then we don't need an ordinance, then. That's what you just said.
But we do need policies, so that if we remove someone, and we end up in court, we can defend why they were removed.
So now it's from an ordinance to a policy?
Well, I, I'm in favor of each commission setting up some rules of what they think is appropriate behavior.
Okay, got it.
Mr. McQuone?
If I understand you correctly, that, that each commission can establish their guidelines, and then make a recommendation to the city council, and if the city council votes to remove that person, they have to write an ordinance, and, and, and read it three times, and wait 30 days, and all that?
Well, unless you want to put an emergency clause, those type of elements to it.
You mean, they can't, if, if they, because they, they vote them in, they can't just vote them out?
No, they don't vote them in, you vote them in.
Well, the city council votes them in.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, the city council votes them in, can't they vote them out?
The statute he's reading there says by proper ordinance.
Removal by proper ordinance.
Three readings.
Is that, that's not, ordinance is not like, like firearm ammunition, is it? It's not that kind of...
No, unfortunately.
Okay, I was curious.
Eliminate a lot of appeals to circuit court. Mr. Thomas?
I just wonder, so would the discussion as to why a, a commission wants to remove this member, would that always be an executive session, or would that be public?
Uh, more than likely, I have to look at, but I think it would probably be an executive session.
And then we'd come back and do the court.
I agree. And then come back and do a vote. Even though the commissioners are not paying.
This is blowing it off.
Well, we will until somebody wants to be removed, and then we got to do an ordinance.
Well, okay.
Mickey?
Okay, usually in our commissions, it's, you've missed X amount of meetings, you just quit coming, whatever. To me, this looks like if you have, how many people are in CAPC? Seven?
Mm-hmm, about the same as ever.
So, if you have seven people on the CAPC, and four of them decide they don't like number five, they could vote them out without any say-so from us.
No.
No.
They send their recommendation to you.
But no, but what I'm saying is, it sounds like that's what they want to be able to do.
No, nobody's ever said that.
If they can do their own removal, it could come down to that. I'm not saying that's what's going on, I'm saying that's what could go on.
They can.
No. That's not our intent.
I know it's not your intent, that's not what I'm saying. If we do this so they can remove their own commissioner, that could happen. But I mean, that's what I'm saying, that's...
We can't do that.
Not right now.
We can't do it anyway. The law won't let us do that.
But you're saying you want us to sit there and give you guys the rights to do that?
Mickey, don't, don't take the words that were put down for the new business thing to that level, that's not what we, we're, that's not what we're trying to do.
Are you, are you asking for us to wash our hands of CAPC in regards to hiring and firing?
No.
Well, then what are you asking?
Well, we can't do it anyway, Mickey, without proper ordinance, so.
So technically, let's see.
I don't see where we're going to go any farther with this discussion.
So, at this point, CAPC can establish what we consider to be attendance, and any other commission could come back and say, planning could come back and say, "We want three," and whatever, whoever it comes out to be, and then comes back here, and then at the point we, and I, either council's going to bless it or not bless it, I haven't figured out if that's even necessary, because obviously it's not, and then it's some, then if, if that's our, our, let's just say it's our rule of CAPC, and let's just for the heck of it say it's four, four absences in a calendar year. And we come back to the council and say, "David Mitchell missed four meetings, and we want him out." And then council goes into executive session, has a discussion...
No, we don't have to, he's talking about the CAPC doing it, I think. We'd just be writing the ordinance.
But I thought we came back here, and we went to executive session, because we have the final authority to bump.
Sure. This is the, this is where...
We could have executive session.
Well, we can.
And discuss the basis for it.
See, this is what I'm trying to find out, what you guys are aiming for.
The issue is, we wouldn't know what the basis is, because we wouldn't have anybody in here, it's not part of our group. This is our, this is our form where we're hiring and firing, thank you.
The, the mayor is probably right, you probably wouldn't want to use an executive session, although you probably can, as you're suggesting, because you couldn't bring in people to find out why the violation, what's going on. Because the executive session, you can't have outsiders.
At all. See, so what are you guys aiming for?
Clarification.
To hire fire on your own?
To have commissioners that agree to come on a commission, come in, and have, come to the meetings and perform the duties. If not, please consider not getting on the commission in the first place, or get out of the way, and let somebody on there that wants to serve. That's probably the bottom line.
So are you guys looking, able to tell them, you haven't met requirements, get out, without having to come here?
No, with, if it, we, if we have to literally come here, and that's a requirement, then we would do it.
That's what I'm asking, you're trying to get rid of that requirement. So you can deal on your own, without having to come to us?
They can't. State law says they got to come to the council.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. So now that's what they were aiming for, now they find out you can't.
All right.
Uh, any, Mr. McQuone? Did we just table this for two, three years?
Just listen to my dad.
We'll do something that's, yeah, that's going to lead somewhere.
Yeah, okay.
Gotcha.
You sure you want to do the budgets?
Do I? Uh, you have to table it for two years? We got a motion in the table. All in favor, take another thing out.
Maybe.
Anybody opposed?
Oh, gosh.
I'm assuming it's all positive, so. Okay, um, our, our next item is, um, budget management process, motion to discuss.
Second.
And you have to, you have to move it.
Oh, I thought the mayor just did it.
No.
No, I need a motion to discuss.
Oh, I thought, I didn't hear the meeting, I thought you said motion to discuss.
I'm sorry, motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss, yes.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Please.
Last, or, at the last meeting, Ms. Kendrick asked me, or suggested that I do a sample budget process, and I have done that, and I'd just like to pass it out, and have you look it over. And I'm going to make a couple of comments about it, but not, not anything, I don't want to go into a real in-depth dialogue.
Share it with you.
This basically is the, divided up into the annual budget process, the ongoing financial management task, and the closing out the annual, annual budget. And there may be things that, you know, different people disagree with, but this was just my ideas, because I was asked to, to write up an, an example. The blue part down at the bottom, I highlighted, because those are essentially policies or procedures that we have implemented since I have been in city council, and, you know, and I'm just using them as an example of steps we've added into the process, not by ordinance, just by, you know, emotions of city council. just by, you know, emotions of city council. We- I brought to the attention of the council the fact that, if you look at that task, the blue one under the task, I pointed out that the city code says that you have to have a financial statement by the fifteenth of each month, not just a budget printout. And so that's why we were- we are now getting the liability statement and the bank balance statement every month. We, you know, we essentially added that into our system. No ordinance, we just voted to do it. We voted to hold a budget workshop prior to the second regularly scheduled council meeting each month. And then I realized that when we were doing all of our workshops, we weren't informing the public about the budget, so we added in the fact that the second agenda meeting of each month, there would be a budget update on television. When you look at the year-end bud- or the year-end cleanup resolution, if you remember, I brought in like the last five years cleanup resolutions and pointed out to you the inconsistencies in the format and all and some information that would be missing from one that was included on another. And we adopted a consistent reporting plan for the year-end budget and then for the cleanup resolution, and then we actually applied it to the mid-year budget adjustment. So I just wanted to point out that we already have a lot of process, we just don't make it official. And somebody new coming in has no clue what the- what all the steps are. It would be nice to have an official process that, you know, everybody agreed upon. You look at the back page, I just found a great quote from New Jersey which says, "Taking a proactive approach to initial with budgeting is the key to a successful budget and the financial viability of an organization." And I pointed out that if you just hope that future mayors are going to be team players, that's not proactive, that's just hoping. And if you hope that we're all going to be here forever with all of our knowledge about budgeting, that's not proactive, that's just hoping. You know, we- proactive means planning and setting up a system so that new people coming in will know exactly where they are and what they're supposed to do. So, that was what I wanted to bring to your attention.
I like these.
Thank you, Bob. All right, any further discussion?
Yes.
Are you wanting us to adopt- are you wanting to make a motion based on this or what is the-
I would- I don't want to make a motion, I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question of-
Well, you already asked a question, Bob, what?
I would not want to make a motion to adopt this because this is just out of my head. I would like to make a motion that the city council work to set- to formalize a- a financial management plan.
Okay.
And the question I have is, a financial management plan, this is for future, not only for our council now, but for the future of councils in the city. Is that correct?
Mr. Thomas?
I would say that we can't do- we can't adopt anything that forces the mayor to do anything. We can't force the mayor to do a budget update every month. All we can do is put on the agenda budget update. If he chooses not to, you know, he would choose not to. This is city council's work, it doesn't impact- it does not force the mayor to do anything at all. This is what we want to do as a council.
Okay.
Or what we think we need to do as a council.
Okay.
Mr. Snyder?
So would this be a good thing to have in the council handbook? It's- it wouldn't be an ordinance like law?
No, not an ordinance.
But it would be in the handbook saying, this is what you do, like Robert's Rules and all that. Do you think it would- that would be appropriate for what you're aiming for? Bob?
Miss Kendrick?
Do we have a council handbook?
We have a handbook for every department.
I've never seen it.
We don't have a council handbook.
Okay. We- what do you mean we don't have one, this is surely you two?
No, on second thought, never mind. I'll just let it go.
Did you have a comment, Mr. McClung?
I would keep reminding myself, too.
Maybe I'm using the wrong term when I say handbook.
All right.
We have guidelines. If- I like this because I learned something, you know, in the process. Uh, I find that with the budget, you know, I look at some of it and I look at part of it and a lot I don't understand. Within this concept, would this- something like this or something else like it for a budget process, would that be something that we could do in a workshop to discuss these points?
We pretty much do this already, I think, Mr. Thomas.
Well, I-
What you're wanting to done is you want to see it on paper for future people.
Because I- when I walk down council, I would like to have that.
In the handbook.
But again, you know, each council is going to be different and each mayor is going to be different. This doesn't mean, I mean, this is good, this is what we're doing and this is what we can go by, but it's no- it's not going to be necessarily forever. I mean, I don't know what's going to happen in ten years with the council or the mayors.
Well, I know at the beginning of, like in January, you vote on whether to continue to follow Robert's Rules of Order and you vote to have the meetings the second and fourth. Wouldn't that be something you would also consider here on the budget process?
A lot of this is done by state law, what he's written.
Yeah.
So we're- we're already done, we can't do anything different than what's already on here. Some of this, you know, holding the budget workshop prior to the second, you know, those are things that the council can do every January or, you know, as such.
We do it.
And we do, pretty much. So I guess that's in answer to your question, is that- we do. Yes.
Okay.
You know, uh... Further discussion?
Did you have a motion you were doing?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
There was no second. Oh, wait a minute. What was the motion?
I raised my hand, I don't know.
Mr. Thomas?
I thought you said further discussion, is there a second or?
No, the motion was to have council finalize the financial management plan.
Like this?
Guidelines, a financial management guideline.
Okay.
Repeat that, repeat the motion again?
A motion to have council finalize a financial management guideline. Set of guidelines.
Oh, that's fine.
What is finalized? What do you mean by finalized?
Well, I- well, write one, this is- this was just my example, I would like council to write one.
But if it's not an ordinance, where would it go?
The motion is for the council to establish a financial, budgetary financial management process.
A written.
Written.
Bob, will you say that for me, please?
Okay.
Motion to have council-
I make the motion that's for council to write a Eureka Springs City Council Financial Management Process Plan.
Thank you.
Where would it go? That's my-
Uh, wait, we got a motion, do we have a second?
If we can find out where it would go.
We need a second to discuss it.
A second.
All right.
Right. Where would it go?
It would go into the council handbook.
I know we've got something, I don't like that, maybe using the wrong word.
It would be page one of a handbook, which we desperately need, but, you know, I'd be happy to get page one.
So why don't you change your-
Mr. McClung?
Do a handbook and put this in it.
Mr. McClung?
I'm going to keep reminding myself, too.
All right.
Change your motion.
We got a motion, and we got a second. So the council is going to write a, um, budget management fin- financial management plan.
Well, I don't know if we're going to, we haven't voted yet.
True.
And could we have a roll call on that if you don't mind?
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call.
Ms. Adamson?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, I'd like to have it tied into the handbook.
Or? Ms. Kendrick?
I'll open one.
No.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Three, three.
Motion fails. All right.
I know we've got something, because I've seen-
You can bring that one up next time. All right, we've got, um, our last unfinished business. Discussion of site visit to the former Eastside.
So moved?
Motion to discuss, okay, second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Somebody laid off, I mean, y'all were up there, what do you think?
The key, no, I'm going to keep it simple because I- I, the concept of the community center, the concept of bringing as much of the community activity there, I understand all of that and I agree with- with all of it. I agree with promoting the community center, I agree with it growing. I compliment everybody that has worked on that thing, the money that's gone in. I- nobody take what I'm getting ready to say as a negative, but I just don't see it for the city at all, sorry. And that- that I thought when- when the words came out, that- that we didn't have exclusive use of that space and- and that we were just renting for the meetings we had, that- that just finished me.
Mickey?
I understand what David is saying and agree on a lot of levels of that. What I would like to see is, I would like to see our finance director first see if we can swing this, if we can float the rent. Then I would like to see council in general or the mayor, either one, whatever y'all think would be better, have a sit-down with their full board or a vast majority therein and see if we can't reconcile the monthly rent, shall we say. They want us there really bad, we should be there really bad, at the same time, it has to be feasible. So if we can renegotiate prices, this would go a long way to making it better, but I really would like to see the finance director look into what they're asking and what we can possibly do.
Ms. Kendrick?
Um, I am in the process right now of moving my office, so I have just undertaken quite a search of the office space that is available. And like the city, my great concern was parking, so I focused on areas where there was adequate parking. A lot of my clients are handicapped, I wanted to make sure that it was accessible. And I was able to find places that are considerably less rent than this is. Um, also, I would like to point out that the Berryville Community Center charges sixty dollars per meeting as opposed to the hundred that, um, our community center wants to charge us. I just don't think the pricing is fair.
Mr. McClung?
Uh, we met with the finance director earlier this- this afternoon, or this evening, and- and went over, uh, uh, some, where we are with our budget as we stand right now for the year and quite frankly, we're not in any kind of financial position to take anything else other than staying right where we are with what we have. So, I mean, it's pretty cut and dried, in my opinion, that's all I got.
Mickey?
I would like to have the finance director look into this on its own level, aside from everything else, and see what he says.
David?
I- I would think that would require a vote of council to- before we directed that because I think it's pretty easy when you look at the financials right here, based on the discussion we have, that Mr. McClung is right.
He didn't take a vote.
I have issues with the place. They- the ideal is having the accessibility, it's not there, the city would have to bear that cost as well, which I find difficult. And I'm not convinced that twenty thousand dollars is going to actually get that room up to- to full, not just the room, but the environs, uh, up to the level that we'd like to have it at. Um, and it just sounds like a bad- a bad deal right now, excuse me, I have a cough drop in my mouth. Um, it just seems like a bad deal for the city.
In addressing your- your concern about twenty thousand dollars, I think that's, while you may be, uh, may be a valid concern, that's what they have said they would do and I think that's what we would require them to do, to have a turnkey, um, class A office space, so I don't think that's really, should be taken into consideration. They said they'd do it, they'd do it, if they don't, we won't, don't move in. But I think the other considerations are, you know, we do have to consider and through there. And it's up to the council and financial. I think from a budget standpoint, that's a- it's a major hit right now. Uh, and I'm not worried too much about, I mean, yeah, I am worried. You know, and in two years, I don't know where we'll be. So, Mickey?
Um, I would just like to have the finance director look into this. A workshop, say in a couple of weeks or a month or whatever, would be ideal. But I would like to him to have the time to look into not only the monthly, but the initial, with the understanding that means we're rent-free for two years. I'd like him to get all of that financial information and look into it and either come back to a workshop with this or inform you to inform us, however.
If that's what you want, make a motion for it.
Okay, I make a motion, we have the finance director look into it, things are always possible. But have him look into it and if the finance director says yes, fine, if he says no, fine. At least we have the person with the expertise looking into it and juggling and seeing.
Okay, we've got a motion, we'll have a second.
Of course not, it's too brilliant.
All right, fails for lack of a second.
That was my motion that fails, what about the place?
Well, I'm, you know, they'll take a motion to- to do that.
The agenda topic says just discussion, it doesn't-
Yeah.
We have to let them know.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, the whole reason for trying to find a new place is, I think, accessibility would be the major reason. And I'd like to speak for a minute as the- of two persons with disabilities. And the reason that we say person with disability is because they're person first, the disability's not come first. My sons don't want the city to go broke to accommodate their disability. They- they're rational people. Uh, and I- I think that the- the disabled community in- in Eureka Springs mostly is rational and can understand that we're looking, but this was not a good deal and we're going to pass on it and we're going to continue to look and do the best that we can for as quickly as possible.
I agree.
Ms. Kendrick?
I would like us to can- to continue to consider other places. This is not a desirable location because it, not just for handicap purposes, but for all of our citizenry. They can't come in and sit with us in the same room and that, to me, is not acceptable. So I would like to continue to look at options.
Ms. Kendrick, and no offense, we've been looking at options for twenty years. Uh, we- I think we recognize this isn't the most suitable spot and we've tried to use other facilities and, uh, we will continue to look. I mean, I think your- your concerns are well noted. Uh, I don't think you'll find anybody in this city that says this is the best spot, but it's the only spot we have at this point. And we're- and I'll continue to look and I think that, you know, the rest of the city, I'm always looking for solutions on that. Mickey?
Um, regardless of what we're going to do, where- what we're actually going to take, we have to let them know, one way or another, if we're interested or not. We have got to, we can't just leave them hanging, they're waiting for an answer so they can get on with business.
Let me ask you this, is the council, I mean, granted the money thing is the issue, would the council be, I mean, is there a better issue if it was five hundred dollars a month at the end of the year?
We can send them a counter back, something like, since it's, uh, we're going to rent it by the meeting, that, uh, we don't put any money upfront and we were, they- they complete it, get the thing ready together and we pay them fifty dollars a meeting to have it there. and we pay them $50 a meeting to have it there. And we don't put out any construction.
$5 is better than your $50. I mean, logical for that way.
It was just theoretical. Just the fact if you wanted to send a counter back, come up with a counter.
There's one consideration that has not been mentioned here. And that is that the community foundation does have a ground lease on that building. If we put a lot of work into that building expecting a free ride for a period of time, there's always the chance that they could default on the lease and walk away. And we would lose our investment. So I do want everybody to be aware of that.
Good point.
But it's like, Ms. Mitchell said, we can make a counter offer if the council wants. I mean, that's another way of going back to it.
I would do that and see what they say. And let's put it on the agenda for next meeting.
I need a motion.
Okay, so I make a motion that we offer them the 1/3 amount that you came up with. And if you would talk to them, please, and come back for our next meeting, and we will discuss it on the agenda at the next meeting.
Basically, it'd be $50 a month.
No, he said $50. You said $500.
I said $50 a meeting. But you said $500. And that's what she was making her motion off of.
A month.
But would you state your motion clearly and not have it be vague, please?
Yeah, that would be ten... So that would be actually better than...
How many meetings do we have?
Okay, I make a motion that we offer them $500 a month and that the mayor talk with them, offer this counter offer, and then we discuss this next agenda. $50 by ten is...
All right, so the motion was $500 a month and nothing up front?
And she has no second.
I didn't say that. No, but that's what he said.
She has no second.
What does "nothing up front" mean?
The 20. I think we need the finance director to look into that.
That's their $20,000.
That's two years of no rent.
We need a second if we're gonna discuss it.
I just want the motion clear.
I'm just trying to figure out what the motion is also.
For $500 a month, and we do the 20, because that's two years of free rent.
They're paying the 20.
Now, they already added something that wasn't there. Now, that's new.
Well, that's because we're just throwing it in there.
Yes, they were going to put the $20,000... No, we were gonna pay the 20.
Yeah, okay.
Plus, we were going to do the improvements to the rent. So I think that ought to... If we're going to be paying $500 a month, we ought to take the 20 plus our improvements and amortize it over whatever number of months it is at $500 a month. So it may take us three years.
No.
Four years. Who knows? But in the meantime...
I'm looking for a second, I guess.
Okay, so what did that mean, loss? Would you please read us the motion?
She has no clue. So we really don't have a motion yet?
$500 a month then?
$500 a month, and the mayor would talk to them. We will discuss it on the next meeting. And we're only doing that right now. We're not doing the $20,000 on this motion.
Okay. Motion cleared, everybody? Do I have a second?
$500 a month, the mayor would talk with them, and we would put it on the agenda.
She also said in her $20,000.
That is not part of this motion. That's what I said.
Mickey, hold on.
Oh, she did?
Yeah, she dropped.
I said that's not part of this motion.
Okay, so... But we still don't have a second.
Because it's a separate issue.
We still don't have a second. Okay. Any other motions? Ms. Mitchell?
Make a motion that the... We ought... The city offered to the community center $500 a month for a completed functional meeting space. And that's... I'll stop right there.
Second.
Okay, Mickey?
Well, they're supposed to come up with the 20. That's been the problem from day one. That was why they were asking. That's why they were asking.
That's not our problem. Not our problem.
That's why they were coming to us on that regard.
Well...
I did not make the site visit today, but I saw everybody coming in. I didn't see anybody enthusiastic about the building. Getting something you don't want cheaper is not a good deal, is that forget. And also, lowering the rent doesn't address your concern about them defaulting on their rent.
No, it does not. Correct.
Yeah.
Well, it does insofar as we will not have spent the money ourselves in putting in the improvements.
But we would've gone... Moved up there.
We would've moved over there. And yes, you're correct.
But we can always move back on a month's notice. All right, we do have a motion and a second in further discussion.
Should we have a second? Read the motion, please. I'm so lost.
A motion to offer $500 a month for a completed functional meeting space, period.
Okay. All those in favor, signify with a "aye"?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, no.
I'll wish you the...
4-2?
No.
Okay, so it's 2-4?
2-4. 4-2, 2-4. All right, motion fails.
And the two ayes were Kendrick, Mitchell. Thank you.
All right, any other motion?
On this?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, Ms. Snyder?
I make a motion that we direct the mayor to talk with the community center board in regards to... Where do we go from here?
What?
In regards to where do we go from here? You know, us getting it... Them getting us informing.
You would like for me to maybe see where... What they'll do?
See what options and possibilities are gonna be open to us and report back at the next meeting.
Get a second? Peg, second? Everybody understand the motion? Go in and see what they have to say. All in favor, signify with a "aye"?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Okay. Bob and David?
Yes.
All right.
I'm so tired.
Agenda setting?
Yeah.
Okay, Peggy?
Mine's in form of a question and that maybe Kim can answer. What about this ADA self-evaluation? Self-assessment? Can that be on the agenda?
You wanna do it?
What do you mean?
Do you wanna do the...
I wanna know what it is.
It's an assessment for American Disability Act to make sure how the city's doing. And that's the process that we're going through. And it won't be ready by next meeting.
All right. That's what I wanted to know. That's what I wanted to know.
It's an ongoing process. When we get hit with all these FOI's, FOIA's requests...
I understand. And I don't wanna complicate things.
Seems to interrupt a lot of other issues.
Yeah, I don't wanna complicate things. But I do... I add a motion, which was about the auditorium for meeting space for the council.
You wanna add discussion for the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess I'll second for discussion only.
Okay, Mickey's second. All right.
I would like a report from the city clerk on the process and status of updating the city code meaning, the city code book that is available to the public. I'm sorry?
The codification?
Yes, the codification. And the city codes that all of the alder persons have. You know, do we have a process for updating those?
I can answer that right now.
Okay. Well, let me finish my... And then I'd also like to know about where we are with municipal code and the availability of minutes online. Apparently, we seem to be missing some minutes online. So yes, please, if you can do that now.
But isn't this agenda setting? Just for clarification?
Yeah, it really is.
I don't wanna be...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. We'll just talk about that as agenda. Anybody else? All right.
Does that have to be seconded or something?
It doesn't need to be an agenda item. I mean, if the question would just be asked, I could answer it. But, okay, have a second.
Well, I just wanted to give you time and...
Can you do it?
Do it.
All right, go ahead.
There's no money. And that's the reason the code has not been updated. I would love to update the code book as soon as there is money. And then I send the new information on to Little Rock. They incorporate it, print it, send it back, their outfit that deals with municipal codes. That is distributed to all of you with an instruction list to take out page A, put in page B. The books you have are the most recent, from 2015. If you have a doubt that you have not current information, please contact me, and we'll address that. Minutes online are updated, not through the court's office, because I don't have access to that. You'll have to talk with the mayor's assistant about that. Okay?
Then I would like to amend my agenda items so that we can discuss the importance of updating the city code.
Okay, I'll second that. All right, any further items? Okay. City council comments? Peg?
Oh, goodie. I just wanted to say, these are flowers from my garden. I didn't pick them at the cemetery. Or off of grave. I didn't do that. These are good. They're all plants that are really in bloom right now, the flocks, the oregano, and the lilies. It's lovely. And I wanted to thank the incredible amount of volunteerism out at the cemetery. I can't even get into it right now, but it's been overwhelming and conflicting and good and anxiety-producing, but it's happening. And thank you.
Mickey?
Ew. Not a whole lot. I wanna congratulate my marine son, who is going to be a grandpa. That little young squirt. Remember, he was born and raised here. Yes, he is gonna be a grandpa. Yes. That's it.
Well, I very much appreciate the positive polite tone 99% of this meeting had tonight. It was much improved. And I will be more relaxed next time. I won't have to be on guard all the time.
It's 'cause of the flowers.
It was the alcohol.
It's natural.
Am I the one for so?
Ms. McClung?
I just wanna thank everybody on this commission and all the other commissions for the time that they volunteer to the city of Eureka Springs. Most of it's pretty thankless. And I'm glad that you take the time to be involved. That's all.
I would ditto that. And other than that, I have no comment.
No comment. And did you say you wanted to make comments?
Yes, I would, thank you. I have worked for this city for over 16 years. Ten as an employee at Public Works. And when I left there, we had a $1.2 million budget, which I assisted in designing and monitoring very precisely. I have asked repeatedly that when people have questions about anything with which I deal in my office, that I get a phone call or an email. For some reason, there are some people on this council who think that the city clerk is an office clerk? Or I don't know what. I have asked repeatedly, if you have a question, call me. Make an appointment. I'll show you anything you like. But being dressed down in group emails and being... I mean, I'm happy. You don't need to put it on the agenda. Just call me and ask me. I am an elected official. I have... I am on the same tier as the rest of you. And I do not appreciate it, being treated as the office clerk. I have probably more experience than most of you at this table dealing with the city's budgets. That's my comment. Thank you.
We have some... Quite a few upcoming events for this next two weeks. We got on 5/21 through the 26th. It's coming up this week. Like, I saw some of them setting up already. The Second Annual Plen Air Art Festival. Going out, and it's open-air art. So you'll see a lot of people with easels, probably setting up all over the city, painting. And that's something that I know Terry and I used to see a lot. And hopefully, this will be the start of another good festival in going through here. The 24th, which is Wednesday, 9:00 in the morning, where you will have the Doughboys Statue Rededication in the Basin Park. On the 26th and 27th, we will have the Celebrate Jesus in the Basin Park. And on the 27th, we'll have the Celebrate Jesus Parade at 2:00, starting from the library down Spring Street. Following that parade, we will have the Joy in Diversity and Love Parade following the Celebrate Jesus Parade. It will be starting at Sweet Springs. 5/28, Sunday, we'll have... Melon Light will be dancing in the park. And if you hadn't had a chance to see Melon Light perform, had a chance to see Melon Light perform, they're great, it's a great performance and great entertainment, so come on down and see them. June 6th, or June 2nd through the 4th, we've got the Mustang Car Show coming in, back in, and it's going to be up at Pine Mountain Village. And then on the 3rd, we'll have the parade at 3:00 going through there. Also, on the 3rd of that evening, from 6:00 to 8:00, we'll have Drumming in the Park, and then on the 4th, we will have Esso Ribbit Cutting out for their wood studio out at Esso Campus, which is outside of the city, at 3:00. And on the 8th, and that's the one I passed out, this little flyer, which is a, from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m., Windrock is coming in and is going to be talking about retail development in Eureka Springs, and it's going to be a workshop from 5:30 to 6:30, free, it's open to the public and the auditorium, and it's with Windrock International, which is a great organization that's helping Eureka Springs with their economic development. So if you get a chance, anybody who's involved with any kind of economic development and retail development, come to, because we're going to have, it's going to be a great workshop for them.
Wednesday or Thursday, because June 8 is a Thursday.
Wednesday is June 8.
Wednesday, June 8.
I'm sorry, did I say Thursday?
No, the calendar says Thursday is the 8th.
This says Wednesday, June 8.
Yeah, and the calendar says June 8 is a Thursday.
Uh-oh.
God, I don't know what people listen to me. I will second that.
It's June 8.
It's June 8, but it's not on Wednesday.
So it's on Thursday, not Wednesday.
June 8.
June 8 is Thursday.
Yep, Thursday, June 8 is Thursday, sorry, good eye, good catch.
Oh, me.
And I don't know where we're going to go with this one, but on June 9th through the 11th, we're going to have the 12th Annual Ozark Transformational Conference.
Transformational?
At the end of the Ozarks Convention Center, Transformational Conference.
What is it? Is it a spiritual thing?
Transformers? Transformers. We'll be transforming the McClungs.
Into?
Into the McCluns.
I want to be Cadillac.
I think this goes along with, I don't, I'm not sure, it's on my calendar of events, so I guess we'll go up through the 9th. June 9th, you can find out. That's all I have, get a motion?
Vote.
What? Oh, you're so right, and most important, and I had that in my, on my list somewhere into there, what, when needs a vote? June 13th?
Of the early voting up here, fourth.
June 13th, special elections for Lake Leatherwood, 1/8 sales tax coming up, that's June 13th, so that's a reminder to all the citizens, please get out and vote.
Simple, it's a simple majority, that's all it takes, right?
That's it, yep, so, and if you haven't been out to Lake Leatherwood, drive out there and see what they've done with that 1/8 of a cent sales tax.
Memorial Day.
They have created their road improvements out there, the cabins, it's just, the playgrounds, it's just incredible out there.
I just want to remind everybody, Bob mentioned again about the cemetery on Memorial Day, and also just to let everybody know preemptively that the CAPC is help sponsoring fireworks at the, for the 4th of July, it'll be the Sunday before the 4th this year, so it's, yeah, it'll be on the 2nd. There's going to be things going on out there, pretty much most of the day, on the 2nd, and the CAPC and Parks are doing a joint effort for fireworks.
And Parks is cooperating with the CAPC, and the fireworks will be, I understand the method of church, they're going to be baking a bunch of pies.
Oh, boy.
There's going to be barbecue out there, so all-day activities.
Hot dog.
And hot dogs, too.
Oh, boy.
Get a motion to adjourn?
Follow.
Any in favor? Thank you all.